5:00 PM, and I'd like to call on our Finance Director Katie Henry to present the topic.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get started, and I realize this is out of the norm, is there any way to adjust the cameras that are on, Council? The...Mayor, you are straddling kind of the middle, and I'm not going to be able to tell what your reaction is to anything. I'm just curious if there's a way to move the left...there we go. Thank you. Okay, with that, good evening, Mayor, Council. We are here this evening for this work session to go over geo-bonds. I'm going to share my screen as soon as that goes through. Let's try this again. And just to make sure that we are all on the same page, we're talking about this in light of the the Parks and Rec bond. And again, I'm having my same computer issues. I'm assuming you can see the title of my PowerPoint right now.
We can.
Okay, good. We should be in business then. Okay, so before we go into the detail on the geo-bonds, I want to invite Susan Muir, who has come back to us from retirement, to go over this. Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you, Katie. Hi, Mayor and Councilors. I'm just here to give a brief overview of some of the numbers that you're going to see in the presentation tonight. So the other thing I'm here to tell you is we are going to talk about all of this again on July 17th, the different components and everything, but I wanted to let you know when you hear that $98.5 million, what's in there? So we have $72.5 million for the new rec center, senior center improvements, and the library improvements both came in at about $4.5 million. Redevelopment of the current pool site at City Park is looking like $2 million. Citywide park improvements through that PROS plan that you adopted last year, we have $9 million in that. And then the outdoor amenities at the rec center would total $6 million. So that's how we came up with the $98.5 million that you're going to hear about tonight. But again, tonight is all about finance and geo-bonds, and you will be able to hear and ask a lot more questions about this slide when I come back to you on July 17th. So I'll toss it back to Katie. Thanks, Katie.
Okay, thank you, Susan. So we have talked about long-term debt. There's been lots of terms that have kind of been thrown around, and debt capacity and long-term debt, and kind of what's in there, what's not in there. Just to set the background for that, I'm giving you some idea. These are estimated balances. We haven't closed our books or anything yet, but we have geo-bonds currently of $12.7 million. We have an unamortized premium, which goes along with that, of close to a million. We have notes payable. These are, they're still long-term debt, but they're bank debt of about $3 million. And we have the PERS liability-related debt of just over a million. When you look at our financial reports in the long-term debt section and in the long-term debt numbers, you also have inter-fund loans, you have leases, you have compensated absences. All of these things make up debt. But the point I want to make of all this is we are only talking tonight about geo-bonds. So we're going to focus really in on one type of debt, which is this bonded debt. And for that, we have some experts here with us this evening. We have Sarah Dickey, and we have Lauren McMillan. And I am going to turn things over to them because they will be much better suited to share the details and the specifics than I am. So take it away, ladies.
All right, thank you, Katie. So, um, let me see here, which one am I doing? How's that look?
Okay, we can see it now.
You can see the presentation? Okay. It's weird, I didn't get the little green. Okay. Well, good evening. Thanks for having us. So we are here to give you a little overview just about general obligation bonds, how they work, since you're embarking on a potential bond authorization. There's a lot to know just about the mechanics. When, so when you're going to talk to constituents, you're talking about this in the correct manner. So the reason I'm here is I actually serve as the city's financial advisor. So we help on the numbers part. I work for a firm called Piper Sandler. Sarah, did you want to do a little introduction?
Sure, yes. Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah Dickey. I serve as bond counsel to the city, so I'm a partner at Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood. And we've worked in the past with the city on a variety of different types of borrowings. And in this case, we're here to talk about general obligation bonds and what those look like. So I'll be speaking to the legal side of things, and Lauren will be speaking to the number side of things tonight.
Yeah, and please jump in if you have questions throughout. We're happy to entertain them and also assures us that you're following along, and we haven't put you to sleep yet. So, as Katie mentioned, there are many different kinds of debt a city can issue: general obligation bonds, full faith and credit, revenue bonds, pension bonds, urban renewal, all different term, like notes, loans, all of these things that basically just mean different kinds of debt. We like to make it really confusing. It makes you think, you know, we're smarter than we are, and that it's more confusing than it actually is. But basically, each one has a different security pledge or repayment source. And really, what our presentation today is about general obligation bonds just specifically. So first off, who's involved in a bond issue? I think especially when you haven't been through this on a regular basis, it can be kind of confusing as to the different parties that may be involved because you actually cannot do it on your own. So there are staff members at the city that are really important to the process. Both Katie and Susan have been kind of our point people today. I'm sure others will get involved throughout the process as well. Bond counsel, Sarah's firm, is important for drafting all of the various legal documents. There's a resolution that the city council approves to go on the ballot, which includes the ballot title. And then after that, there's an authorizing resolution to actually approve the issuance of the bonds. And then there's various legal documents associated with the actual bond sale that they're in charge of drafting. As financial advisor, we really handle the numbers. It ends up being a lot more than that, encompasses, you know, preparing numbers ahead of the election. As we'll see later on in the presentation, basically that means estimating the levy rate or the cost to voters. And then once bonds are approved, we help navigate the entire issuance process because unfortunately, money just doesn't show up in your bank account after the bonds are approved. There's a whole process to go through. And so we help the city go through all of those steps, prepare disclosure documents, get a credit rating from one of the rating agencies, and then get the bonds all ready to be sold. And then an underwriter will need to be on board there, another financial firm that will actually sell the bond. So they will bring the investors to the table and bring the money into the district or into the city's account. And then you'll also have different communications folks on board to help with the campaign process, and then potentially a public affairs consultant, and then architect, project manager, and there can be others as well. So in general, general obligation bonds are only issued by municipalities. So the debt service, that's a term for the principal, the principal of the amount that you borrow, and then the interest that you pay on it. And that is secured by a property tax levy that's levied on all the properties within your boundaries. And then it's also secured by what's called a full faith and credit pledge, which just means that if something were to happen and that geo-levy was not sufficient to make the debt service payment, then the issuer would use any legally available funds to make up that shortfall and ensure that that payment is made. So makes it very, very secure credit, helps lower your borrowing costs. The property tax levy is unlimited. So you may have heard the term unlimited geo-bond. Now, that doesn't mean that you can just set it at whatever you want. It, the levy rate is unlimited in the sense that it, the actual levy rate can be set as high as necessary to generate enough revenue to pay debt service. So if you need a million dollars to pay your debt service, and the size of your tax base changes, essentially if your tax base were to shrink, that may cause the levy rate to go higher. But you're still only generating that million dollars that you need to pay debt service. And the collections have to be used to pay debt service. You cannot take excess collections and use it to do something else. So for all these reasons, again, this is a very secure credit. Interest is typically exempt from state and federal taxes. What that means is the investor doesn't have to pay income tax on the interest income they receive from you. And that helps lower that borrowing rate even further because since they don't have to pay taxes, they're willing to accept a lower interest rate compared to taxable debt. The catch is, of course, that a geo-bond must be approved by your voters. A few property tax concepts that are really important when we start talking about geo-bonds. You know, some folks may not be super familiar with our property tax system. But since the bonds are repaid by a dedicated levy, there's a few things that we need to understand. So some key terms are real market value, or RMV. That is the amount that a property could reasonably expect to sell for as of January 1. This is measured by your county assessor each year. It's the value as of January 1, but those values don't become available until the fall each year. You've probably seen information come out from the county assessor usually around October. The assessed value, or AV, of a property is the actual value that is subject to taxation. So oftentimes, especially on residential property, the assessed value is not the same as the real market value. The real market value is often much higher. And something that's important is that the AV cannot exceed the RMV. So you're not going to be paying taxes on an assessed value that's higher than what your property is worth. So the bond levy rate is a tax rate expressed in dollars per thousand of assessed value. So we take the bond levy rate, and then it gets multiplied by the assessed value of a property. This levy rate is also calculated annually and assessed by the county assessor. So what can get kind of confusing is that issuers are not actually setting the levy rate for a geo-bond. What happens is you tell the county assessor how much you need to levy in a dollar amount each year, and that's based on how much you have to pay in debt service. And what the assessor does is they translate it to that levy rate based on what that new assessed value is, which you don't know at the time that you levy. So what we're doing when we're talking about levy rates for the future and the cost, you will always hear us say they are estimated and projected because they will not actually be known until each year when the county assessor sets that rate. And it's also important to remember when you're talking about this that you cannot guarantee the levy rate. Oftentimes, folks want to say, "We have this bond. The levy rate will be this, and it will be no higher than this rate." And unfortunately, that's just not how our property tax system works. I believe this, I get to pitch it over to you, Sarah.
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting myself. All right. So some other items to note about general obligation bonds. That levy that Lauren was talking about, the levy for bond debt service, is in addition to your permanent rate, so it's a levy above and beyond what you levy for your permanent rate. And it's not subject to compression, unlike something like, say, a local option levy. So it won't be reduced. It's, it's, you get the full amount of the levy. Another thing worth noting on geo-bonds is that there is a limit that state law places on the amount that a city can borrow in general obligation bonds. Under state law, cities are limited to having outstanding at any one time general obligation bonds in an amount up to 3% of their RMV. So in practice, this is rarely a determining factor for how much you seek from voters for geo-bonds because it tends to be a pretty high number. So for the city of McMinnville, for example, that number is about $197 million. But that is the statutory limit on geo-bonds for cities. You have a choice about when you can take a ballot measure to your voters. Technically, there are four times during the year that you could take a measure to voters. That would be March, May, September, November. However, March and September aren't really good options because they're subject to something called a double majority. And what that means is that in order to pass a bond on one of those dates, you need both a turnout in voters in your jurisdiction of over 50% and to have over 50% of those voters who voted vote yes. And getting that type, that amount of voters out, over 50% on one of those dates, which are sort of off elections anyway, is very hard. So folks don't go on those dates. May and November tend to be the dates that folks, that folks choose from because those are not subject to the double majority. So all you need is the majority of voters who are voting on those dates to vote yes to pass your bond. If you do decide to take a geo-bond measure to voters, you will need to prepare something called a ballot title. And what that is, is essentially a contract with the voters saying, describing the terms of the bond to them and asking them to vote yes or no as to whether you have the authority to issue those bonds. What are the terms in the ballot title that voters are voting on? One of them is a not to exceed principal amount, so it's a limit on how much you can borrow in general obligation bonds. Another thing, term that's in that ballot title is a description of the projects to be financed. And you are only permitted, and we'll talk about this a little bit more later on, but you're only permitted to use geo-bond proceeds on projects that are described in your ballot title. So you want to make sure that your ballot title is comprehensive of all the projects you may want to finance. There's also the levy rate estimate. Lauren kind of talked about this a little bit earlier. Technically, this isn't actually required under state law to be in the ballot title, but it's, it's become so common, and voters are used to seeing it, and it makes sense. You know, voters want to know, what is the estimate of what this is going to cost me? That in practice, it's really, it's required for ballot titles. And it's an estimate of what that rate per thousand would be, of AV would be for, for your constituents. As Lauren said, it's an estimate. It's not a guarantee. And, and the ballot title language will make that clear. We would help with that. Lauren would help with that. But any communications to voters really need to make that clear that it's an estimate. And then finally, another term that's often seen in ballot titles is a not to exceed maturity limit for bonds. This is not something that is required for the city to have in its ballot title. However, there are other jurisdictions that are required to have this. So for instance, special districts like school districts are required to provide a maturity limit in their ballot titles. Voters are used to seeing it because of that, so it's something to consider, whether you think that would be useful for voters to include in your ballot title. Lauren, do you want to move on to the next slide? So this is the ballot title that I was just referring to. And you can see here that, you know, it has those, those items that I was talking about, not to exceed amount of $40 million, the description of the projects, the levy rate estimate language at the bottom, along with a maturity limit. You will also notice that it has a very specific form. And this form is a form that's required by Oregon law. So there are three parts to it, specifically the first part, which is the caption. And this is limited to 10 words and identifies the subject of the measure. And then the next section is the question. That's limited to 20 words and must be phrased in a way where a yes answer corresponds to a yes vote. You may be looking at this question and going, "But wait, that's more than 20 words," and you would be right. That second sentence there, the one that starts with "if the bonds are approved", that's statutorily required to be in the question, but doesn't count against your word count. So it's really that first, that first sentence that ends with the question mark that is the 20-word limit. That second sentence, though, is very important to have in your ballot title since it is required by law. So that's something that we always like to bring up when we're presenting on stuff like this because it can get confusing, and something we would help with as a city is drafting a ballot title. Finally, there's the summary, which is limited to 175 words and is a concise and impartial statement summarizing the measure. And essentially, this is an area where you have more room to describe the projects, describe, provide that levy rate estimate, and a term if you decide to include one. The other thing that you'll note here is there's a sentence there about annual audits and a citizen oversight committee. That's not required, but some, some folks like to include it as a, it can help get voter support for your ballot title. So that's the ballot title. That's sort of what it looks like. Different municipalities obviously will include different information there, but that's the form. There's another thing that the city would prepare in connection with providing a ballot title to its voters, and that's a, that's an explanatory statement. If a county prepares a voter's pamphlet in connection with an election, then the entity going out for a bond measure, so here the city, would be required to also prepare an explanatory statement. We understand Yam Hill County will be requiring, or will be preparing a voter's pamphlet for the November election at least. So the explanatory statement would be something that the city would be preparing. And that's a 500-word, has a 500-word limit and is an impartial, simple, and understandable statement explaining the measure and its effect. So it provides a little bit more space for you to provide information about projects to voters and just gives you a little bit more, help give folks a little bit more context about what is being proposed. One thing to note about both the sample, both the ballot title and the explanatory statement is that they are required to be impartial and fact-based. So they can't be written in a way that's intended to sway a voter or convince a voter to vote yes on a, on a measure. They have to be based in fact and objective in just presenting information to voters and asking them to make a decision based on that information. Lauren, do you want to...
Yeah, one thing to note is just the summary, you know, describing the projects is really an art because you don't want to get too specific because then you might obligate yourself to do something. And if things change, that could get complicated. So it's a, it's a matter of, you know, letting folks know what you intend to do with the proceeds, but giving yourself some flexibility. So sometimes we see folks that are like, "No, we need, we need to say, I don't know, like how many gallons the pool is going to be, how many lanes it's going to include." And that you're not required to be that detailed in this document, and we would really recommend not being that detailed. Definitely just giving folks, again, an idea of what you're going to use the proceeds on, but having like those details be a little more flexible. And you can get into a little more detail in the explanatory statement. But as Sarah said, this piece, the ballot title, is that contract with your voters and really drives what you can and need to do with the project.
Yeah, absolutely, Lauren. That's a good point. I mean, we, as bond counsel and Lauren as well, as financial advisor, should the city decide to take a bond measure to voters, would help with crafting that language. As Lauren said, it really is a balance in making sure that you're being specific about the project so that voters know what you're going to be providing, but also not being ultra-specific, as Lauren said. I mean, we've had folks, for instance, you know, we have seen folks provide, like Lauren said, like square footage or addresses or whatever, and all of that very specific information can change during the construction process. So yeah, it is, it is definitely an art, that's for sure. All right, moving on to the next slide. If you decide to go for, out for a geo-bond, which date between May and November is better? So overall, there's about a 58% pass rate for Oregon city geo-bond measures. But as you'll see in the, this slide right here, May has a slightly higher pass rate. Some theories about why, I mean, there's a lot of theories about why this may be. Some theories are that, you know, in November, folks are getting their property tax bills. Maybe they're more sensitive to increases in property tax rates as opposed, and then, or also November tends to have a wider variety of voters voting as opposed to May where voters tend to be more kind of issue-focused. So if you have a geo-bond, maybe the May voters are more focused on the geo-bond and hopefully more focused in favor. Or maybe, you know, it's just sunny in May and people are happier. Who knows? But really, these are just averages, and the difference isn't huge between them. So, and we certainly have many folks who go out on the November election and have passed bonds in a November election. So ultimately, I think timing, the timing should be just what works best for the city, when the projects are ready, when the city's ready to start getting going on communicating with voters and that sort of thing. That should really be the drive, driving factor here.
And this is really just a big picture of the data, right? We're not campaign consultants, so, you know, if the district or if the city ends up working with someone, they can dive into more of the specifics. We do have some clients who insist on going in November because of the makeup of their voters. So it is very, you know, issuers, like community-specific, and this shouldn't sway you from one to the other. And as Sarah said, like, it's not a huge difference between the two. It's just, you know, something notable, I think, that that we see when we look at the data split between the two options.
Thanks, Lauren. All right, use of proceeds. General obligation bonds can be a really useful tool for financing important community projects, but there are legal constraints on how bond proceeds can be used and the types of things you can finance. So we thought it'd be useful to go over some of those constraints here. One of the constraints is that the projects that are financed must be capital costs. So under the Oregon Constitution, capital cost means the costs of land and other assets having a useful life of more than one year. And it does not include routine maintenance or supplies. So for instance, you couldn't go out for a geo-bond to finance operating costs or to, you know, just finance just basic maintenance on a property. However, something like, you know, a rec facility, parks, those tend to be pretty squarely within the definition of capital costs. Another legal constraint is that the weighted average life of the bonds can't exceed the weighted average life of the projects. This typically isn't an issue for financing things like facilities, land, and things associated with those. This is more of an issue if you're financing something with a shorter life, like software, computers. So I wouldn't expect this would be an issue for the city's borrowing, but of course, you know, Lauren and we would take a look, a look at it as you narrow down the list of projects. Additionally, geo-bond proceeds, including any interest earned on those proceeds, needs to be used for projects described in the ballot title. So Lauren talked about this earlier and, and mentioned this, and, and we kind of alluded to this, but you really are constrained, this is a contract with your voters. You really are constrained to only using proceeds on items that are listed in your ballot title. So you really want to be thoughtful when you're preparing the ballot title about what the project is, what you could potentially be wanting to spend bond proceeds on. It's an art, as Lauren said, trying to craft the ballot title to make sure that you provide enough flexibility where if things change in the project, you know, the thing, the design that you thought you were going to go with ends up being too expensive, or there's a better design that's more, you know, whatever it is, that you have a little bit of flexibility in there, but still are making a promise to your voters about what you're going to provide that gives them kind of concrete information about the project. And then finally, generally speaking, the city must own the projects that it finances with general obligation bond proceeds. And then finally, generally speaking, the city must own the projects that it finances with general obligation bond proceeds. So. You couldn't, uh, and, and that lasts for as long as the bonds are outstanding. So you couldn't. Uh, turn around and uh, give a bond of finance project to, you know, some company or something like that. We typically don't see this with municipalities, but it's worth flagging. Alright, finally, there are constraints on use of bond proceeds under federal tax law. As Lauren mentioned earlier, the usually general obligation bonds are issued on a federally tax exempt basis. Meaning that the interest that the purchasers of the bonds get is exempt from federal taxation. And this is good for the city and its voters because it allows you to issue bonds at a lower interest rate. However, there are uh, there are. A number of restrictions that are associated with issuing tax exempt bonds that you should be aware of. One of these is that the bonds must be used for a public purpose. Usually this isn't a problem for, for cities issuing general obligation bonds. Another one is that there are limitations on private use of bond financed projects. So for instance, if you're going to be leasing or renting part of the recreation facility to. Uh, private entity and that includes under federal tax law nonprofits and the federal government. Um, then you would want to have conversations with your bond camp, with us about that. Um. Just to make sure, you know, there are ways to do it that work within federal tax law. Uh, there's ways to uh, to think about it and, and make it work, but you really have to, to flag it early and then we can have those conversations. Um, so just something worth noting. You are permitted to use bond proceeds to reimburse yourself for costs that you incurred before you issued the bonds. And the city has a reimbursement resolution in place, so that's good. Uh, and basically that reimbursement resolution allows you to start spending money now. And to reimburse yourself down the road. Um, so you have that flexibility. And finally, under federal tax law, you must spend bond proceeds within certain limits, time limits. So for instance, when you issue the bonds, you must have a reasonable expectation to spend eighty-five percent of the proceeds within three years. And that's a reasonable expectation at the time that you issue. So if something changes down the road, it's okay. We usually say document what changed so that if the IRS, you know, audits your bonds, you have a reason. Well, you know. The, this contractor had something come up or, you know, whatever the case may be, you have your reason, but it's. At the time you issue the bonds, you need to have a reasonable expectation to be spending down the bonds that quickly. And that's because the federal government doesn't want you issuing bonds that you don't need on a federally tax exempt basis. And so, you know, at, when, eh, if, if your bonds pass and you're, you're looking to issue bonds. You'll work with us, you'll work with Lauren to look at your cash flows and how you expect to spend. Uh, spend money going forward and figure out, you know, can you, should you borrow your full authority all at once? Should you do a piece now, a piece later? Those are things that uh, there's a lot of ways you can, you can work with, you know, whatever spending timeline you have. But it's, it's something that you have to think about as you're, as you're looking toward issuing bonds.
Before you go on to the next um, slide. You mentioned the, the reimbursement of past expenditures. There have been several questions that come up and that may come up. Um, during our meeting that starts at seven o'clock tonight. So um. That have to do with what qualifies as that capital expenditure. So you said reimbursement of past expenditures. The question at hand is, do those past expenditures include the costs of getting this bond to the voters? Or the cost of issuing the bond?
So cost of issuing the bond, so stepping back, you know, as I said. You can only use bond proceeds to uh, to finance capital costs that are described in your ballot title. So the question is, are those costs capital costs? And are they capitalizable to a project that's described in your ballot title? What we have said to folks is to ask your auditor, is this. Um, cost, whatever it may be, capitalizable to this project under, under gap? Um, we understand issuance costs are capitalizable to the project and so would be reimbursable with, with bond proceeds and, and those. Those issuance costs wouldn't be paid until the bonds close. So technically they wouldn't be reimbursed. They'd just be paid out of bond proceeds, but yes. Those are payable out of bond proceeds. The other piece of it, the, the cost of getting the bond to the voter. I think that's a question for your o- auditors as to whether that, those costs are capitalizable to the projects. Alright, I think I am done with this slide, Lauren. If you want to take over.
We have a counselor with a question. Can we, Counselor Payne?
Thank you. I'm, I may not be the only one. Um, I have two questions related to the issue. Rate, the three percent, and I just want to get clarification. Is that the real market value? The measure five real market value or assessed value?
So the, I think you're referring to.
Oh, yeah, right there.
The three percent?
Yes.
Um, what we typically use for that is the ru- the measure five real market value to calculate that. That gets you the one ninety-six and change.
Okay, thank you. And then the one ninety-six, does that inc- or does it have to include current bonds? In other words, are the current bonds are extr- ex- subtracted from that?
Yes, that, that's your total limit. That would include any outstanding bonds plus future debt.
Understood. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, we can proceed. Thank you.
Great. I was just about to do. A check, make sure you guys were still hanging in there. So thank you for asking questions. Uh, so I know that's a lot of information more generally about how bonds work. So now we're gonna dig in a little bit more to what this means for your specific project. So again, we're gonna start looking at those property values that we mentioned. So this table is for the city's property values back through two thousand and five. Again, you've got that real market value. I think this is the M five. For folks that don't know. That's just a, a slightly lower number. There's certain exemptions that the uh, assessor factors in when they calculate this number. But it's still an approximation of the ru- real market value, the salable value of property within the city. Um, and so you can see how that has changed over the last twenty years. Um. Sometimes it goes up pretty sharply. Uh, sometimes it does actually decline. Um, for various reasons. I'm not entirely sure what happened this year, if that's just related to. Sort of the, the slight slowdown that we've seen in a number of places. Or if that was related to a specific property, but that's something that we can get clarity from the assessor on. Um, the assessed value, again, this is the value that is used for determining someone's tax burden. Is about three and a half billion dollars for the city. And the real market value is six and a half billion. So. As I mentioned, there is a pretty big gap there between those two values. Um, and it's important to note that assessed value growth for existing properties. Is limited to three percent per year. So if you have your, your home, you will notice that your assessed value does not grow more than three percent per year. Unless you were to make some changes to it, um, and improve it. And then for new properties, those come onto the roll at a determined value, um, that the assessor figures out. And so the city as a whole can see assessed value grow more than three percent per year. And I think what's really interesting is looking at twenty twenty-five, your real market value actually declined this year. But you can see that the city's assessed value still grew just over that three percent mark. So we do factor in urban renewal. It just, sometimes it affects how the bond rate is calculated. Um, and we just make sure that we're tracking that correctly. In this case, it will not siphon off of the, the bond levy. Um, and you can see that the assessed value in many years grows more than that three percent per year, again, due to that new construction. So over um, the last twenty years, you've seen, you know, growth higher than three percent on average. And believe it or not, I am not a psychic and I cannot predict what is gonna happen to your future assessed values. But uh, we have a pretty good idea that they're going to continue to grow. Um, so we do look to your historical assessed value growth and use that to. Um, you come up with some assessed value growth assumption. When we look, look at numbers and try to project out what the levy rate will be over the next twenty years. Another thing that I cannot predict is interest rates. And these do impact the cost of your borrowing as well. Uh, so as I mentioned, the money doesn't just show up after the bond issue happens or after the election happens. There's a process that you'll have to go through. So the city likely won't do the first sale of the bond authorization. Until, you know, early twenty twenty-six. So rates can change a lot between now and then. This graph shows you um, a couple of benchmark. Uh, sort of indices, um, and the US Treasury that we track. To get a sense of what the market is doing, you know, that black box market. Um, the gray is the twenty-year US Treasury bond. This is actually a benchmark for taxable debt. Uh, the federal government doesn't borrow on a tax exempt basis like local governments. Uh, and even though you're not borrowing the taxable market, the treasury market. Really impacts what's going on in the tax exempt market. As you can see, they often move in tandem. Uh, the blue line is the triple A MMD index, which is just like um, the bond version of say the S and P five hundred. It tracks naturally triple A rated debt and how it's selling. And then this rate is set every day, so we can get an idea of our rates going up, our rates going down. And various events over, you know, the last twenty years have impacted where rates have gone up, gone down. You can see. Lovely little spikes like here. This was COVID. Um, you know, the situation back in two thousand and eight. Um, what was this one? I can't remember. There's too many. Uh, but so rates go up and rates go down. Um. If you like to track the financial markets, you may know that uh, market experts are calling for the Fed to reduce rates. Later this year, um, they have said they're likely. Going to be doing two rate reductions before the end of the year, but I will tell you that changes all the time. There's been calling for rates to go down for much longer. Um, then, and they've gone up instead or stayed the same. So no one really knows what they're gonna do or because future events can impact what's gonna happen there. So it's possible this could be really well timed. We may see some rate reductions. We're just gonna cross our fingers. Uh, but we're also going to be conservative and, you know. We're gonna build some cushion into the numbers, uh, to account for some of that interest rate volatility. Uh, in case interest rates do go up between now and when the bonds are actually sold and your interest rates um, are locked in. So what, the first thing that we do when we're starting to look um, at a new issue for folks is what do you have outstanding? How is a new issue going to im- impact your existing debt? And so the city does have two issues that are gonna be outstanding until twenty thirty and twenty thirty-three. Um, you can see here the different colored bars and we've got a little stair step going on here, but the rate. You know, takes a little nosedive um, in the future. So this is how your bond levy rate would be. Would eh, be estimated to look if we did nothing, right? This is um. Your picture with those two issues. And then now looking at a new bond. So uh, as Katie mentioned, we've been talking about a ninety-eight and a half million dollar issue. Um, for this purpose, we've taken the approach of splitting it into two series or two sales. As Sarah mentioned, there is that restriction on how quickly you have to spend the proceeds. So we're not sure exactly what your cash flow situation will be, but it seems likely that. Doing two sales will be a good fit. Um, and so we've just mostly split it down the middle. The first sale is estimated to be fifty million. And with the balance coming two years later in twenty twenty-eight. So as I mentioned, with a November election, we'd likely sell bonds in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. Uh, we've also used a twenty-year term or in this case, twenty years of payments. You can see for this first sale, the term ends up being slightly more than twenty years. So in order to have flexibility for this, you would actually see twenty-one years in the ballot title. Just because of the timing of when the bonds are issued and principal payments are scheduled. Um, for June to tie in with when property tax collections are received.
We have a counselor that has a question on this. Can we have him ask it now?
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Chinowith?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, eh, I'm not an expert on construction and so that's gonna be obvious by the end of the question I'm gonna ask. Um, but if the need for funds is quicker than two years because we're building at a rate that's quicker than two years. Are, is there flexibility to sell that sooner?
Some, not unlimited though. So um, when we set that first, and this may be, I'm gonna scroll ahead just so you'll see. When we sell that first issue, we're gonna be structuring it to hit that levy rate target. And leave room for the second sale two years later. So the levy rate is high here. You could not issue like a full year earlier. Without impacting that structure, right? You would have to raise the levy rate higher. I- if you were to go say a full year earlier. Um, we do have some flexibility in that, you know, this is estimating June of twenty twenty-eight. But you could really go between January to June, most likely. So you could move it up by a few months, but re- not much more than that. So it will be important when we go to do that first sale, that the city has. A good cash flow projection and has a handle on when they think they will need the funds and we can also. Gross up that first sale a little bit. Like if we look at the cash flow. We won't have the first sale size to be exactly the amount you need to get you to June of twenty-eight. We build in a few extra months of cushion, most likely.
May I follow up, Mayor? So maybe I should have asked that question a little differently. You've done a bunch of these projects, I assume, in helping people get bonds across the finish line and, and getting to this point. Um, so maybe I should have asked it this way. Would the, would the, would the builders that are going to be bidding on such a project be? Uh, uh, this is assuming a schedule that works with them in general.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Can I answer the question since I'm the one who put forward this split?
Yes, please.
Um, we don't know yet. This project has had a lot of starts and stops. It's had changes in the total amounts. It's had changes in what's being included, what's not. Um, and so Susan and I were not able to give a specific cash flow. Once, we will, over the next few months, be really buckling down. We'll have several work sessions. We'll be getting things in line. And by the time this goes to the voters, we need to have. A solid plan for what is going to happen and what is this cash flow going to look like? For the, for this evening's presentation, because we haven't had those conversations. This was my proposal so that we had something to give you as an estimate.
Thank you.
And I will say that every project is different. There, you know, there isn't a, a set, you know. Spending timeline for folks, but I would. a set, you know, spending timeline for folks. But I would say, given what you're looking at in the scope, that this length of time, you know, say, a three to four-year construction horizon, doesn't seem, you know, it's within the realm of what we see from other issuers as well. So I think that this, you know, may end up being in the realm of what works for you guys, but again, we'll need to drill down on those numbers as we get closer to actually selling. And this can be flexible. This can, can change.
Okay. We have a question from Counselor Geary.
Yeah, just was maybe prompting Susan to chime in on our thoughts and projected activity relative to a November bond, a March, a passage in this November of '25, a March drawdown, and then the timeline of activity on the potential projects, how we see, you know, property acquisition and just that runway of getting the new building drawn, getting the team assembled and getting that underway. And how does that, how does that runway look with these two drawdowns?
Yeah, you've, you've hit on sort of the, the information that I've received from other jurisdictions that are building buildings. This is a really reasonable timeline given what we have right now. Like Katie said, we've had architects on board at some point. We don't have one on board right now, but this timeline that we've put together, and Lauren's exactly right, this is within the realm of possibility and I think is a really good starting point for us and really reasonable, especially because it'll take more than a year, at least a year, to do the construction drawings. So keep that in mind before we even start construction. We're going to be doing those really detailed architectural drawings before then.
We have a question from Counselor Tocolski.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Lauren, did I understand earlier that you were the person that helped determine some of the construction costs? Is that what you said, or was it just for the bond?
Oh, no, just the borrowing cost.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you. That was all.
Yes.
We have a follow-up question from Counselor Geary.
Since we're stopped and looking at things that have something relative to what I have, and there's only seven minutes left, I'm going to get this one in. I've seen throughout the project in multiple scenarios, there's like 10-year maturity date, 11-year maturity date, 15-year maturity date, 20 to 25 and 20-year. How does that, how and when does that get set? And what's the math and mystics behind that?
It's, think of it when you do your home mortgage. So you have the option to do a 30-year or a 15-year or a 20-year, you know, you have those different borrowing options, right? And the different length of time impacts your borrowing rate. Typically, the longer you borrow, the higher the interest rate. But stretching it out can reduce your annual payment. So the, the idea here is 20 years is a really common term for capital projects for folks. That was kind of our starting point. And so you can see what the estimated levy rate is at 20 years. And then from here, you, like, the city does have a choice where if you don't like the projected $1.79, there would be the option to lengthen it, look at 25 years, 30 years, but that is going to increase your total interest cost. It's going to increase your overall borrowing cost, right? So some folks are not comfortable with stretching it out that long. You know, there may be other future projects that the city may want to undertake. And so for that 30-year period, you would be looking at, you know, a levy rate increase if you needed to do another GO bond for a project. So those are all things to consider when you're trying to narrow down what term you want to do. You do have to decide, well, as Sarah said, there's actually not a requirement to have it in the ballot title, but typically, we do see that included. And usually, I think folks have that figured out before they put the ballot title together and finalize that, which would be August in this case for a November election.
Right. And even though you're not required to provide a term, like a not-to-exceed term in your ballot title, you do have that levy rate estimate information in there, right? And that's based on an assumption about how long, what the term is that you borrow for. So that levy rate estimate really needs to be based on your best estimate of the maturity of your bond.
We have another question from Counselor Tocolski, and we just want to note we have about five minutes left.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Director Muir, this is directed to you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to discuss the numbers themselves and the faith in the numbers. This doesn't seem like the form to do that at this hour. Are we waiting until the next hour to do that?
Do you mean the construction estimates?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, that'll be on July 17. So I will be back. And if you are unable to finish this conversation tonight, I'll see if Sarah and Lauren can come if there's any follow-up questions on that same night. But that's when we'll really be talking about the different components, what's included in them, and the cost estimates, July 17.
Thank you.
Okay, no more questions here right now.
Okay, we'll try and wrap this up. I think we're close. Just key things to note here, layering these two issues on top of the existing bonds. They do use a 1.5% cushion over current interest rate estimates. Again, that goes back to that volatility and not having those rates locked in for a while. These, this true interest cost is an estimate of the total overall interest cost of the borrowing. That does include the 1.5% cushion. So if you're saying that seems rather high, yes, yes, it does, because it includes that 1.5% cushion. And the hope is that we can do better when we actually lock in the bond sales. Projected levy rates, this is basically what the data on the, on the prior page in graph form can see. There is an increase here. And so you can talk about it in terms of the total estimated levy rate, but what we see often with folks is when there's an increase, they will isolate what this increase is. In this case, a 0.05, I believe, increase from your current fiscal 2025 rate that is known to the estimated borrowing, or the estimated levy rate with the new issue. Couple other things is just timeline. I won't go into detail here, but you have this information. So this shows you kind of the suggested timeframe for ahead of the election and key tasks that need to happen. And then after the election, what goes into that actual borrowing process. Overall, takes about two and a half to three months from when we get going on that. And then this is just an example of the detailed events that happen for the bond sale. When we get to that point, we put this together for the city's actual, you know, it gets tailored for the city's issue and timing. And then one final thing is just, as I mentioned, one of those things that we're going to be doing is obtaining a credit rating for the bond issue. The city does have an existing credit rating on outstanding debt of AA3, which is highlighted here in the table, very high, great, strong credit rating. But every time you borrow, you do need to go to the rating agency and get a rating basically reaffirmed or reassigned and have it attached to your new bond issue. And that is something that we help the city navigate through as part of that bond process. And that's it.
Okay, I think we're good here. So thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yes. Good night.
Bye. And so it is 6:59. I see a lot of red shirts in the audience, and thank you all for coming. I know you want this bond to pass, and we appreciate you coming and seeing your support. Okay, we're going to take just a couple minutes and we'll start our regular council meeting. Recording stopped. Recording in progress. We're going to go ahead and start our regular council meeting. If I can get everybody to have a seat. No, I don't like. I will now call the city council meeting to order at 7:05, and I'll ask Claudia to do a roll call, please.
Counselor Cunningham?
Here.
Counselor Tocolski?
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Here.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Counselor Geary?
Good evening.
Council President Peralta?
Here.
And Mayor Morris?
Here.
If you're able to stand, we'd like you to help join us in the pledge, and I've asked Counselor Chenoweth to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, strong.
I want to let everybody know we have one change to tonight's agenda. Before we begin, staff has asked us to remove item six, resolution number 2025-33, from the consent agenda, and a revised agenda was sent out earlier in the day, restating the record. So now we're going to move on to public comments. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a land use decision that is or will be in front of the city council, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to four minutes per person for a total of 32 minutes. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or chat feature and send a chat to the city recorder team. Once your team, once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Please announce your name and the city you live in for the record, and we will start those with who we have pre-registered. Claudia, do we have anybody?
Yes. Before we start, I do want to state for the record that we received four written public comments, which were emailed to city council and will be entered into the amended packet posted tomorrow. First, we have Cheryl Shaki.
Hello, Cheryl. You have a fan club.
No, it's just because I've lived here forever and I'm getting older.
We are the same.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to speak our hearts tonight. I'm here representing the McMinnville Pickleball Club, but I'm also here as a lifelong McMinnville resident. And I feel like if we don't do, you know, move forward with the bond, we will still be stuck in the 70s and 80s when I was very young, well, almost very young. Our kids deserve good recreational facilities. Our middle-aged people deserve good recreational facilities. Our seniors deserve these facilities. I, I just know the mental health of anybody that gets out on a pickleball court becomes happier. They become more excited and into their competition. But most of all, it's just they make many new friends, whether they are the young kids that come out, whether it's the older folks there. My friendship base has blown exponentially by being out on a pickleball court. And I foresee me playing as long as these great knees of mine will allow me to. So thank you for giving me the time here to, once again, make a plea to put this bond on the ballot for our community and for our, our health. Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Claudia? Next, we have Kevin Chambers.
Kevin, you should have brought people with you to clap. Feel better?
Yeah, thank you. My name's Kevin Chambers and I live here in McMinnville. I'm representing the CPR PAC, the Community Parks and Recreation PAC. Before I jump into my prepared remarks, I just wanted to let everyone know that we do have an informational meeting on the bond scheduled for Saturday, the 28th at the pool at 6:00 PM. Any of you are welcome, any of you are all welcome. And so, yeah, I want to mention that. Council, Mayor, thank you so much for having me. Thank you for your hard work and dedication during this budget season. We know that they're not easy choices. And while you're making tough decisions up there in the dais, we've been out in the community talking with neighbors, knocking on doors and hosting the information sessions that I talked about. And the message is clear, we're hearing people want this project. You can see it in the room tonight, we have support, now we need your support as well. This city needs better facilities, not someday, we need them now. We need places where our kids can learn to swim, they can learn how to read, where our seniors can stay active and connected, where families can play and laugh and grow together. Public spaces that increase opportunities for everyone regardless of their income or background. We need places that build community. We've listened to your concerns, we've adjusted our vision. The proposal we've sent to you is not a wish list, it's not a wish list, it's a carefully crafted compromise. Would we love to do more? Of course. More for the library, more for the senior center, more for parks, more for a recreation center. That's what we dreamed of, but we heard you. You asked us to stay under 100 million and we did that. You asked us to consider operational casts and we have. You've asked us to include the library, the senior center and parks and those are all in. And you asked us to be fiscally responsible and we are. In that previous presentation, it wasn't called out, but by my calculation, seems like the increase for the average homeowner for this bond would be about $18. I think that's a pretty reasonable ask, $18 a month. This is a very good plan, it's the right plan for the time and we're all ready to go. We've already spent countless hours as volunteers pushing this forward and we've shown up again and again to these types of meetings because we believe in the city and we believe in this moment. We are not stopping. We are in this all the way, so please don't block our momentum. Don't let this opportunity slip through our fingers. Be our partners. Stand with us, help us build something truly meaningful for McMinnville. Support this project, keep the bond items in the budget and let's continue working together as partners. The city has already invested significant time and resources to get us to this point and so let's not let that go to waste. Let's move forward, put this measure on the ballot and give the people of McMinnville the chance to vote for the future they want and deserve. We've already seen the cost of waiting, this is our movement, let's rise to meet it. Thank you.
Thank you Kevin.
Claudia? Next, we have Sitlali Grimaldo.
Welcome.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak tonight. My name is Sitlali Grimaldo. I'm here as a parent, as a community member and as someone who strongly supports the bond proposal. I want to take a moment to share how much the current pool and more importantly, the swim team has meant to my 11-year-old child and our family. My child joined the swim team a couple of years ago and the transformation has been incredible. Through this experience, he has gained more than just swimming skills. He has found confidence, discipline, friendships and a real sense of belonging. Every practice, every meet and every challenge in the pool has helped shape his character. He's learned how to set goals, overcome setbacks and be a part of something bigger than himself. But our current facility is aging. It is no longer meeting the needs of the growing number of kids who want to participate in swim team or even just learn how to swim safely. There are limitations that prevent more children from accessing the same opportunities my child has been lucky enough to enjoy. This bond proposal is an investment in our community's health, safety and future. It will provide a safe space for swim lessons, a venue for school and community teams and a gathering place that promotes wellness and inclusion for all ages. We always say that children are the future and this is a concrete way we can support that future by giving them the tools, resources and facilities they need to thrive. I respectfully urge you to support the bond proposal. You won't just be building a facility, you'll be building opportunities, resilience and a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everyone that signed up.
That's all that signed up?
Yeah.
Is there anybody else in the room that wanted to speak? Oh, go ahead. I'm gonna have you state your name and where you live and then if you could fill out the card before you leave and hand it to Claudia, that would be great. Thank you. You're a team, it's okay.
So, we think we're in the right place for this, we weren't really sure where to start. My name is Lisa and I live in Yamhill.
My name is Shaylen Miller and I live in McMinnville.
A very dear friend of ours was recently killed, May 24th, on a Cypress and Old Sheridan Road. She walked that dog every day, twice a day. She was religiously cautious. She loved that, like that was what her and Oakley did together, twice a day. No matter how much we told her, you can take a time off, he'll be fine, go play ball. Nope, her and that dog walked. It's tragic. But she was a bright light in many people's lives. And we just want to advocate for a traffic change so that this doesn't happen to anybody. Audra was an amazing human and her life was cut way too short along with her dog Oakley. She has an amazing family that is grieving and, you know, I don't even know how they move forward, but they're strong and they are. But...
Yeah, we're here together and some other people out in the crowd just to be a voice for Audra because she, like Lisa said, has walked that path day and night, that was her thing. And it's something that, looking back, kind of feels like it shouldn't have happened because there should be a sidewalk or a light that's blinking and the pedestrian can click the button and it will light up. So we're just here because we want there to be a change. And thinking about, you know, is there someone else that has to die for this to change? Like that shouldn't be the case, it shouldn't have ever happened at all. And we just want to be a voice for her and see what the next steps are to be able to make that change.
I'm gonna respond to you, I don't normally respond, but I'm going to. I want you to know that we've already at the city had discussions. I know our police department and our public works are looking and I believe we have a consultant working on it as well to figure out a solution or something that can help. I wish I could say we could make it never happen again, but we're definitely looking at what we can do to improve that area. It's a bad intersection in different ways. I am sorry for your loss, I understand grief. And I'm really sorry.
Yeah, thank you very much for that response, that means a lot. And whatever we can do or, you know, whatever, we would love to be a part or help.
If you want to make sure and fill out the comment card and get it to Claudia and if Claudia can give me your names and we'll try to keep you abreast of what's going on.
That would be amazing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Was there anybody else? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to stewardship report on our city insurance coverage from Ryan Hartzell from Hagan Hamilton. Ryan, this was better than water and lights reception for you last week.
I've never had that kind of greeting before for insurance, so. Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me here to talk about the 2025-26 insurance stewardship report for the city of McMinnville. This was a big year, every three years, the city through CIS goes through an appraisal process of all the infrastructure, mainly the, you know, the physical buildings and the contents. That's on a rotation and that was completed in December of 2024. The result of that was, and always a little bit tougher budgeting, but we need to make sure our properties are insured to value. With that, you know, that's something we have to build in to look at how is that gonna impact, you know, insurance costs going forward. There already, it's a very difficult insurance marketplace for property anyway. But, you know, that's about 21% in value that we had to pick up this year. The good news is we're, we feel good about it, there were some notes, obviously, we're taking on the facility, for the wastewater facility at 3,500 Clearwater, so that becomes the city's responsibility to ensure going forward. So, excited to put that on there, but one of the strategies that we do, so we do a lot of analysis to look at, okay, if we're taking this on, what can we do to control these costs a little bit for insurance? So through, you know, finance and with leadership of the executives, we really looked at modeling, what kind of risk sharing can the city participate in? And it was decided to move to a $10,000 property deductible. Now, in some other insurance programs, we have a lot higher deductible because it's cumulative. So going to a $10,000 property deductible saves us a good chunk of money, we feel that's worth it. They're all, we can always go higher than that, but knowing that part of the discussions that everybody's participated in is we have an aging infrastructure certainly. Deferred maintenance is certainly a topic I know that you discuss a lot. So we want to be sensitive not to overdo it. But the average claim over about a six-year period in the city of McMinnville is about $5,600 on property, so we felt like that $10,000 was a good number to get to. The other programs for the general liability and the auto liability have a much higher deductible, but that is a situation where if we have a claim, it builds on one another each year. Or each occurrence that happens through a 12-month period for the year. I do want to say, we do spend a lot of time and we just completed one with city manager and the city attorney. We really look at how does the city of McMinnville perform in peer group? So, all the communities in the state of Oregon participate in city county insurance services, CIS, and we want to say, how is a city in peer group with its size of population, how is it doing for claims? And I will say, just about every major category, we've really had a nice run. We're performing way above peer group, which is really nice to see. Workers' compensation, really not much of a change there, just a little bit of adjustment on payroll. We're gonna obviously move a little bit farther away, you know, without having the fire department on there, that was a source of claims. Just the nature of the work that they do. So we've seen some trends that in terms of claims frequency have improved greatly. Cyber insurance for cities has always been a little bit of a difficult coverage line. We've seen lots of cyber attacks across cities here in Oregon. We're finally starting to see that marketplace stabilize a little bit. We've got a little bit of a reduction on that this year. And finally, with some new council members, I did want to just remind everybody that through this insurance, you have protection as you serve on the council. So should a claim come in that you're named in, you rely on this program for your legal defense for that, for civil matters. So it's important that you know that you're well protected and we appreciate your time serving on the council and I think we have very good insurance to protect the council for that. With that said, I'd love to answer any questions that mayor or council might have.
Any councillor have any questions? Council Cunningham?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hartzell. I just wanted to focus on something that you were saying about the aging infrastructure and older versus new buildings. So even though a newer building costs a lot more to actually build, am I correct to understand that the insurance claims or the cost of insurance for the older buildings may be higher than the newer buildings?
It is, yeah, and you're right about that. Older buildings are very much, not only just capacity to insure, but there's more limitations and we're gonna see a lot more of that coming through. So the newer buildings we have, yeah, the rate's better. So if you have equal values, but you got a building built in the 20s versus one that was built 10 years ago, the rate's certainly better on a newer building.
Okay, thank you.
Council Peralta?
Thank you. So there's a strong possibility in the next few years that we'll be transacting certain properties that are higher maintenance properties, like for example, the Nelson House. Does... I'm gonna say all of that again. There's a possibility that we'll be transacting properties that are some of the higher maintenance properties in the city and my question is, does that trigger any difference in rate during the year? Is there an adjustment during the year as those properties fall off? Or does that just happen as we come into a new contract?
Yes, so when the city becomes legally responsible or has an insurable interest in a property is when it gets added to a schedule and when they sell, they're, you know, they're removed. You know, obviously with old RB Rubber Building, you know, we looked at that for example and decided really because it was an old industrial building, we put, you know, some unique coverages on there. Of course, we have liability on there, but I think a situation like the Nelson House, I think we're gonna look specifically at and figure out, you know, what's available? Can we get the coverage we need? Is it occupied? So as you have an insurable interest as an entity in something, is when we'll pick it up on the schedule and insure it. Did that answer your question?
Well, it, yeah, so, but also conversely, when we remove them, then those will get taken off the schedule.
Absolutely, yeah, you bet. We spent a lot of time, that's a, it's a pretty long schedule, so $268 million of total insured value, it's a busy job, so.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Ryan? You did well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate your time. Okay, now we're gonna move on to reports from our councillors on committees and board assignments and then we're gonna go to department heads, so I'm gonna start with councillors to my left, so councillor Tocolski.
My committees have not met, so I have nothing new to report.
Council Payne?
Nothing to report.
Council Geary?
Yes, my meeting was visit McMinnville, couple items to note. Two board members are finishing their term and won't be joining again due to their term doubt. So, big thank you to the service of Jen Fero and Danny Chisholm who finished their term. I don't know if anyone's here in the back wants to turn and wave to Danny in the back, thank you, good work. They gave a quick legislative update on a few bills that are going through that have impacts to TLT funding, so they continue to monitor those and see, plan on any impacts, if those are successful or not. Data Steve gave his usual jam-packed, thousand mile an hour, Micro Machine Voice report. The things I pulled from it were international visits to the area have fallen, occupancy climbed 2.2% in May and the Airbnb VRBO May numbers were up year-over-year for our local area. Man, it just sounds cool saying all those little acronyms and numbers. Working on an economic impact calculator, so taking in TLT revenue, number of visitors, average visitor spending and trying to come up with some sort of economic impact calculator. And then went through marketing data, so sort of earned media value, e-newsletter impact, website, social media tracking, that kind of thing. An upcoming event in the area and it must be good because it sounds too cool for me, but there's an alt-wine remix event with tacos, wine and a DJ and it'll be located in McMinnville's Art Alley and that's 6:00 to 9:30 PM on July 12th. And we discussed and heard a presentation on investing in the reserve accounts to make some money on that pile of money instead of none. And then heard a good UFO Fest debrief from Danny and pleased to report that they'll be doing it again. So that's my visit McMinnville report.
All right. So my report for tonight is I had a semi-regular meeting with Chief Wood and we discussed multiple things that we do, I appreciate his time. I've met with Diane Reynolds from Provoking Hope. She updated me on their current programs, their building status and funding concerns and new opportunities. Attended the McMinnville Leadership Meeting, which local leaders get together like Delphian School, Visit McMinnville, Chamber of Commerce to discuss in a casual setting what is going on with our different entities. I attended our monthly Yamhill County Mayor's Meeting hosted by Lafayette. Our main topics this month were discussing city managers, because there are some changes in more than just McMinnville, and budget processes and future ideas on how to go through budget. through budget processing. We also, I met with four local citizens to talk about multiple different topics. And today I met with Dan Gibson of Visit McMinville. We talked about the possibility of the TLT tax, and also just a brief overview of Cory Park. And then I also threw out the first pitch at the McMinville Historical Society's vintage baseball game where Counselor Gary played, did very well. So I'm surprised you didn't mention that. That's my report. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor, excuse me, Council Government's met for its annual budget hearing on the 17th. They are having a challenge with their budgets because they're dependent on federal and state grants for most of their funding and the administrative costs from those grants, and there's been a significant reduction in grants that had been allocated from the federal government. So capital that they were expecting to come in hasn't really happened in such, in some programs. They are working on a cost recovery program for that. Outside of that, I gave a presentation about the city to McMinville Lions Club and have had a few meetings with residents, including about the, the fatality on, on Old Sheridan. So I thank the people for coming and appreciate that, and as the mayor said, we are working towards a solution. Thank you.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. The Innovation Campus PAC met for the fourth time. I think we have one meeting left. We've now moved into a, a favored design plan and starting to talk about design standards. I would encourage all those interested in the Innovation Campus to pay attention to press releases coming out, as there is some good information going to be coming that I can't give you yet. That's my report.
Counselor Cunningham?
Nothing to report.
Okay, so we're going to move on to our department heads. I'm going to start with City Recorder Claudia Sisneros.
Yeah, just want to state that next Friday, city offices will be closed for in observance of 4th of July, and that's all I have.
Scott Burke from Information Systems?
Nothing to report tonight, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to, Katie from Finance Director, are you, do you have anything?
I'm here, but I can't show my face, apparently. So I have, I have several different items. Oh, hang on, she's going to let me, she's going to let me smile for you. There we go, okay. So first of all, we are this week in our, what's called the interim audit, so we have auditors on site this week. Appreciate, for those of you who have responded, most of you have, for the, the questions we had for them, the auditors were very thankful to have those responses. And that is moving along well, and then they will be back with us towards the end of September, September, October, to do the rest of the audit, once we close the books and all of that. So right now, they're doing some of the interim work. We are still waiting to find out if we will have enough federal expenses to merit a single audit. So $750,000 is the limit, and we are so close that we have to have all of June activity come in before we know whether we have to have that or not. So the reason you have not received the communication, the official letter from the auditors, is they don't know whether to tell you we're having just a financial audit or a financial and a federal audit. So they just wanted you to know, they haven't forgotten to communicate with you that they're coming, they're just waiting to do one official letter, and then you will see it coming as soon as we figure out where we're at below or above that $750,000. The second thing I have is that we are launching, as of today, testing for online payments in finance. So people will be able to pay, for example, their TLT, which we've had several requests for, and so we've initiated that. They will be paying their own charges for credit cards, so the city won't be absorbing that, but it will allow them to do all their forms and make their payments online. And so we'll start testing that today. We'll be testing the bank interface in the first week of July, and so we hope to have that up and running by August. And then the last piece is another thing that you may see coming over the next quarter, which is investments. I have started talking with a, a financial advisor on the investment side of things, looking to, is there, are there ways for us to diversify our portfolio? Are there ways for us to get some better interest rates and just address the issue? And the first step on that is going to be our investment policy, which is extremely outdated. So you can expect to see that coming, and then more discussions as we move forward, as I, I hope to approach that with bond proceeds coming in and with, we have our utilities that are amassing lots of money. I'd really like to, for us to take a good look at where that money is going to get the best and most interest we can on it. That's all I have for finance.
Okay, before you leave, Counselor Chenoweth has a question about one of your reports.
So I've, thank you, Mayor. I've made two calls to the auditors, and I've yet to get a return call. Can you put some gentle comment to them to encourage them to call me back?
I spoke to them yesterday, and they said you hadn't called, so I'm curious what, you called the main office?
I called the main office and left voicemail twice. If, if you could, if there's a specific number you would prefer me to call, if you could send that to me, that would be great.
I will, I will communicate that with them. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We're going to move back over. Crystal, I assume you don't want anything because Katie, okay. So Giaf, our Public Works Director?
Yeah, so on the consent agenda tonight, we have an extension for our sweeping contract. Just a reminder, staff is looking at potentially bringing that into, in-house next year, but the, we need the extension for another year because doing that analysis and then potentially having to buy equipment and hire staff to do that work will take us a little while, so just wanted to make sure that was clear. Our city engineer shared some construction updates. So our Cypress and Fellows paving project is going well. We did have some overX, they had to take out a couple feet of bad subgrade in one spot, but it was a much smaller spot than we were estimating, so that's good. They're going to be done with the portion on Cypress south of the intersection by the 4th of July weekend, and then moving into the next phases after that. And our Chandler's Edition project, which was a sewer project last year, and they're doing the repaving now, they're about halfway done with that repaving. That neighborhood has been very patient with us, and that should be wrapped up this week. And then our ARPA Midtown Stormwater Project is going to, or is going well. They just installed the first manhole, and they'll be working their way upstream on that, so that project's moving well. And then on Friday at 5:00 PM, there's going to be a kickoff for our Third Street Demonstration Block. Counselor Cunningham's going to be giving a little speech at that, but people are going to be able to go down to the intersection at Third and Evans, learn about the project, and then be able to start doing the virtual augment, augmented reality, AR. When you hold up your phone, it'll show you the model of what Third Street's going to look like when we make those improvements, and those, that gets kicked off, and then there'll be education boards out there every weekend all summer, and then Noel has also created a great Instagram reel that's getting a lot of views online right now, explaining the project as well. That's it.
Human Resource Director Vicki Hedges?
Okay, so right now, we are in the process of recruiting for several full-time positions, including the airport manager, a police captain, a couple of engineering program managers, wastewater plant mechanic, of course, police officers, and then our Parks and Rec Director, which we are holding virtual interviews for that position Thursday and Friday this week, so hopefully we'll be able to move forward with that process. And I also have an update for you on our training. 61% have completed the training, Jessica, excuse me, Counselor Payne. 15% are in progress, and 10% have not started, so they're going to be sitting in a lot of training over the next few days.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Our Library Director and our temporary Park and Rec Director, Jenny Burke?
So I'm, I'm wearing a number of hats tonight. I'm actually also giving a little bit of, Noel had sent an update to Jeff and, well, to the executive team, asking for some help and some announcements. There was a great Juneteenth celebration. It was the second Juneteenth celebration in McMinville. Last year was the first. At last Friday at Barely Brewing, close to 100 attendees, and it included a short kids activity and readers theater that was acted out by the DEIAC members, followed by live music, thanks to Council President Peralta and Counselor Gary for being there and supporting this program. And you will also be able to see some short snippets and interviews on MCM. Did some interviews at the time of that event. And then wearing my Library Director hat, let's see, I wanted to, to give just a little, we received a typed letter in the mail from a person who'd used the, this particular, this little contraption here, which is basically a way to get photographs or slides or other things into digital format. And she had her parents' photo albums that she then put into digital format, and she says, "There are no words to adequately convey my joy at the end result of this project." So, you know, I bring, sometimes bring silly library of things stuff here to share with you, but I also wanted to bring this just recognition that some of these things have a large impact on people and their families. Speaking of large impact, looking at the consent agenda and talking about things that, you know, what might, what might, some of the conversations that might occur at the meeting this evening, I thought bringing a health monitoring kit might also be useful. This is, does blood pressure monitoring as well as many other things, so it's available for use. And then putting on both Parks and Rec and Library Director hats, because Summer Fun is here, and Parks and Recreation and the library do a lot of partnership throughout the year, but particularly during the summer, and we have free activities for all of the community throughout the summer. If you have not yet picked up your Summer Fun guide, please do so. There are an amazing amount of activities in here for all ages. Tomorrow will be the first storytime kickoff in the park, and we expect over 100 people. It's, it's a really fun activity that happens weekly on Wednesdays, and many other things that will be occurring as well.
Great, thank you. Chief Wood?
Director Hedges kind of stole my thunder a little bit. I was going to give a hiring update, but the, the progress for hiring at the police department is actually going very well at the moment. This is the highest number of applicants for police officer that I have seen since I started here in January. We've had a good turnout for the open captain recruitment, and we should be moving on to the next phase of that recruitment here in the next couple of weeks.
Perfect, thank you. Planning Director Heather Richards?
Yes, thank you, good evening. Couple of things, wanted to let you know that you had a lot of questions during a urban renewal work session about tax assessments and how it's applied, and what it means when a property transacts from a private ownership to public ownership, or public ownership to private ownership. We reached out to Derek Warf, the Yamhill County Tax Assessor, to see if he had time to come in and do a work session with you to answer those questions, and so we are working on lining that up for July 22nd to bring that to you. We've provided a list of questions to him already, based on what we heard from you that you had questions about, but if you have additional questions, feel free to send those to either me or Jeff, and we can forward them to Derek, so he can come prepared to answer those for you.
Great.
Also wanted to let you know, Katie reminded me of this when we were, she was talking about the federal, federal funding funds that we receive. Our, our Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehab Program is underway. It's kicked off a couple of months ago. We've, we've approved about six or seven improvement projects already, and that are working our way through another half dozen right now, so that we can get that money out there and help people improve their homes during this season, before we hit the winter season, so that they can remain in their homes. And then I'd like to share with you some things that are going on that are either being built or will be built. So being built right now is the addition to Empower. That's an industrial manufacturer here in town that's making, we call them fancy protein bars, but it's one of our largest industrial improvement projects that we've seen in McMinville in over a decade or two. It's a $20 million project. It will bring online 450 new jobs in our community. They are about 80% done at this point in time and are commissioning their first line of equipment inside the building, and are waiting for their second line of equipment to commission that as well. So it's exciting to see that project come to fruition and, and open up here pretty soon, and they're actively advertising and interviewing for positions at the facility. And then just recently, it was announced, so we can go public with it, but Goodwill is looking to relocate and build a new facility here in McMinville. They'll be building a new facility across the street from Kramer's, if you want to think of it that way, on Highway 99 there. It's a 10-acre property that was owned by Cascade Steel, and they recently sold it, and it was partitioned, and, and a large tenant for that project will be Goodwill. They'll be the first one going in there.
Thank you. Attorney David Lightburg?
Thank you, Mayor. Much of the stuff that I've been working on recently is on the agenda in one way or another, and the only other thing I wanted to update you on is that we have a hearing tomorrow morning in the dog-related civil suit in which the city is involved. I will let you know how that goes.
Thank you. City Manager Terry?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Couple of things still pending in the legislature, so the caveat to these reports is, none of this is, is for sure until signee die. It is, it does appear likely, though, that the first significant change in the transient lodging tax legislation since 2003 is likely to pass. The current law requires 70% of TLT funds to go to tourism-related activities. 30% is available for discretionary general fund use. The bill pending would shift the percentage to 40% for transient, or for, for visitor-related activities, and 60% for discretionary general fund use. That's a permissive bill, which means the city has some discretion about how to utilize those funds, if at all. I would expect it would set off a series of conversations with our partners at Visit McMinville on how to move forward should that bill pass. I also had my regular meeting with Fire Chief Godvrich today. It looks like the fire district will receive about $3.1 million to help make improvements to their new fire station on Highway 18, and while not a direct impact to the city because they provide fire and EMS services to the city, that would be a significant facility improvement and service improvement for the overall community. And then the third and final item is deemed to be less likely to pass in its current form, but it is the transportation package. Should it not pass, there's a likelihood that the issue will come back in some form in a special session later this fall, and at least the way the transportation package sits right now, if passed, it would generate about another $2.3 million a year for McMinville's street program. Also let you know that in, in partial recognition of the upcoming Independence Day, I'll be out of the office for most of the 1st through the 3rd. I do have a few meetings here and there. Thanks very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. In your packet tonight, there's March and April 2025 Cash Investment Report. Did any councilors have any questions on those reports? No questions? All right, so now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. As mentioned, staff have asked to remove item I, Resolution Number 202533, from the consent agenda. Does any council request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and heard at its regular place on the agenda?
I had a question about Resolution 202526.
Okay, so we'll take it off, so that's E on there. We'll remove that and hear it by itself. Anything else to be removed? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the balance, so all the consent agenda minus E? Which is Resolution 202526. So moved.
A second.
Okay, so that's a motion from Counselor Chenoweth, a second from Counselor Tokolski. Claudia? Claudia?
Council Cunningham?
Aye.
Council Tekolski?
Aye.
Council Chenoweth?
Aye.
Council Payne?
Aye.
Council Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Yes.
The consent agenda has passed unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Perfect. So, now we are going to consider Resolution Number 202526, a resolution certifying provision of municipal services by the City of McMinnville as required by ORS 221.760. Councilor Payne, would you like to start with your concern or question?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that under the recital on that resolution, the first portion that references the ORS does not indicate that we provide fire protection, and it's that the second portion of that resolution, so we're not, I just want to clarify that the city is not claiming that it provides fire protection.
The first part is the ORS, and says that those are what qualifies, and then in the second portion of the resolution, we have removed that fire protection from there, and we've listed just five out of the seven, saying that those are what we're certifying that the city has, and this is what we have to submit to the state in order to receive those state shared revenues.
Understood. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 202526 as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion from Council Cunningham?
Second.
And a second from Council Peralta. Claudia?
Council Cunningham?
Aye.
Council Tekolski?
Aye.
Council Chenoweth?
Aye.
Council Payne?
Aye.
Council Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-26 passes unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Perfect. Thank you. So now, we're going to move on to consider Resolution Number 202527, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2024-25 and making appropriation transfer. I have Katie Henry, Finance Director, to present.
Yes, good evening again. We'll have, we'll be together a few times this evening as we talk about various budgets. This budget resolution has to do with the current year, which ends in just a week from now, and it's basically a, sort of a cleanup resolution. The idea here is that you cannot go over budget in any appropriation item of the budget. So, no funds are over in total, but we have to be really careful at the end of the year and look to make sure that we don't have any areas that could go over. So, retirements are one thing that are often not included in the budget at the beginning. Oftentimes, they can be absorbed with vacancies, but not always when the person has been there a long time, or, you know, it's a full retirement instead of just leaving after a few years. And we have Director Muir, who has retired. And so, the first item on this is $15,000 in Parks and Rec to transfer up from contingency. We also have an adjustment in the library, and the reason this one didn't come earlier in the year was simply that they had the money, they had more donations, and so they were spending this dedicated money from donations. But we have to have the expenditure authority to match it. So, this has revenues to match up with what's being spent. It's all donations. We just need to get the authority on the books in order to spend those donations that either have come in, or have been promised to come in, and are being spent and will be billed out. In the street fund, we have a slightly different issue with the retirement of an employee, where we had an employee who then contested the amount of PERS that they had when they retired, and we discovered there were corrections that had to be made back almost 10 years. So, this added a significant amount of money that had to be paid out, and this is what we're requesting to bring over from contingency in the street fund that couldn't have been foretold, you know, before. They were PERS contributions that just, and I don't know the whole story. I wasn't here yet, it was before my time, but I do know that that employee had to be made, made whole, and that was about $20,000. And then, we also had a truck which came to you in the street fund that was purchased on surplus from McMinnville Water and Light, that the hope was to absorb it in, in M&amp;S savings throughout the year, and there was not quite enough to absorb that, so we're taking that also from contingency. And then, the final fund that has some adjustments is in the insurance services fund. We have a police car that was in an accident. We had accounted for it in the general fund, and when we were reviewing things, we discovered that, wait, this is not accounted for in the correct fund. So, in doing our year-end corrections, we realized, okay, this has to be over in the insurance fund, we have to be accounting for everything in the right place, and so we need to get the expenditure authority for that as well. So, those are the, oh, and there was a rebate from safe of $20,000 that went into the insurance fund, as well as that. So, that offsets a little bit that expense coming from the police car that was damaged. So, with that, we need to have a motion to either accept this budget amendment. If we do not, it could result in audit findings for inadequate budget at the end of the year.
Any councilors have any questions in regards to supplemental budget? Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 202527, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2024-25 and making appropriation transfer?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Geary, and a second from Council Tekolski. Claudia?
Council Cunningham?
Aye.
Council Tekolski?
Aye.
Council Chenoweth?
Aye.
Council Payne?
Aye.
Council Geary?
Aye.
Council President Peralta?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2025-27 passes unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Now, we're going to move on to consider Resolution Number 2025-28, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, making the appropriations, imposing the property taxes, and categorizing the property taxes. I call on Katie Henry, Finance Director, again, to present.
Yes, and now we've reached the culmination of tonight, I think, which is getting the full budget adopted and passed. So, before we dive into the specifics on it, I want to share just a slide with you that the, that the mayor asked us to look at, which has to do with the fund balances, and comparing what we've had in past years, budgets compared to current years. And so, I want to comment for you on what we've had budgeted in terms of months of expenses of operating versus where we ended up actually. So, this, the colored bars are what we have budgeted, the, sorry, the blue bars. The green is the actual amounts at the end of the fiscal year, and this black line is our target two months. So, these are just in months. And as you can see, between fiscal year 1920 and fiscal year 23, we always ended the year significantly higher than was budgeted. Then, in '24 was the first year where we ended the year lower, and then '25, this is our current year right now, we worked and started cutting back when we started mentioning to all of you that we were starting, we were having, we were concerned about ending fund balance. The library closed for some hours, we, there were a few positions laid off, and we restricted hiring, and so that estimated now is, we're estimating to be over the two months at the end of the current year. As we head into tonight's discussion, you can see that we have, in what's been approved, we have that one and a half months about. I wanted to add into here, if we have the $1 million in capital, that takes us to right at the line. It's 1.97 months with that additional $1 million in there. And then, with the projection, the number of months in the outlying years, once we've added in that additional 50 cents on the property taxes, we are above the two months for the next couple of years, and then drop below again in fiscal year '29. These outlying years do not take into consideration any additional capital needs. But I wanted you to be able to see what this, what this shows for target ending fund balance in light of the later discussions that we've had about the prior resolution about the target ending balance being two months, and I'm, I'm right, I'll stop right there and see if anyone has any questions on this before we dive into the details. Are there any questions from anyone on council about the fund balance?
Council Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. What is the cause, excuse me, I'm sorry, what is the cause of the large difference between budgeted and actual? Is that vacancies and the like leading to that huge difference in the first four years of this graph?
Most of it is, is vacancies, but also projects that were budgeted for the full amount of the project that then were done over multiple years. So, if you have the full amount in there, and it doesn't get done that first year, and then it gets taken up in the next year, then you have extra fun, sitting in fund balance.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have at this point. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looks like you can move on, Katie.
So then, with that, you have in your, in your packets, a resolution, and if you're following along, on page 180 is the staff report. And the main thing that I wanted to go over with you is, why are there changes before we've even talked? So, you may wonder, if this is city council's chance to make changes, why is this coming to you with changes already in there? And so, the, the main reason for this is that any time there are accounting, there's accounting that happens, finance then has to do double checks and make sure that something that sounds basic, like buying software for the court, that we've done all of the ins and outs, and is it coming out of this fund or that fund, and do we have one person paying another person who pays out, instead of just straight paying out? So, that's what these changes are, in general. So, the first main change is specifically that the software for the, for the court. It was approved by the Budget Committee to purchase the software for the court, and that was placed in the general fund at the approved budget level. I was not aware, due to my lack of experience here at McMinnville, that here, we purchase software out of the Internal Services Fund, the IS fund. And so, we need to actually budget that out of the IS fund, and then, we need to pay dues from the general fund to the IS fund to do that. This resolution, therefore, has it as an expense in the IS fund, so there's an increase for that. There is also an increase in transfers of $5,000, and I may need someone else to explain this, but I believe there was an omission of, and I'm going to look it up, there's $5,000 that we give to Yamhill County Crisis Outreach Services, and that was erroneously not included in the original budget.
I think it has been 15 in the past, and this year it was 20, and so the difference?
So, the, the total contract for the services, $40,000. We spent about $15,000 out of ARPA funds, and then the balance comes from the, the general fund, and we also received a contribution last year from MIP to support that project, and we don't know if we're going to get that contribution this year. So, we, again, we've budgeted the full $40,000 in the general fund, and this, this extra five is just to make sure we have all the money coming from the right funds.
So, we, when we did that final balancing, it was off by 5,000. We had $15,000 of $20,000 coming from ARPA funds, and then there was missing that 5,000. So, this is a plug to make everything even out at the end, and so it actually is a transfer between the general fund and the Special Assessment Fund, I believe, to, just to get everything back in balance. And really, those, and, oh, and there's one more, which is, when we added the positions for police, we didn't take into account that each position is charged a small amount in workers' comp. That workers' comp is paid to our insurance fund, and so our insurance fund will see revenue increasing by the amount of those benefits. It's $7,599. It's a small amount, but in order for everything to balance, when we plug all of those, that police bulk number that we had in, when we worked on it in the, at the Budget Committee, once we plug it into the detailed lines and get all those numbers ironed out, we end up with $7,600 about, that goes to another fund and has to be accounted for. So, those are the changes that you see there, that we need to bring to you before discussions even start, to say, here's what we need to clean up all the books and get this done This is now your turn, as council, to make any changes. Just a reminder, you cannot go higher than 10% on any fund. You can decrease expenses on the funds, and if you make changes to personnel, Crystal and I may go sobbing in a corner, because it's very difficult to make those on the Just because we have to balance all of the numbers and get all of these little numbers that come back with these thousands that go to other funds and stuff. So, with that?
Okay.
I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Do we have any councilors that would like to make any proposed adjustments?
I have one that I would like to suggest, that the software for municipal court actually be paid out of ARPA funds, where we have over $500,000 in that fund, since it's a one-time purchase, to take it out of the ARPA funds, and instead of our general fund, and that, that amount go towards reserves.
Any discussion?
Yes, may I ask a question on this?
Yes, you may.
So, procedure-wise, with these changes, do these require a motion or just general agreeance? How does, how do the, each of these, and do they have to be handled individually? How does this procedure work?
So, the amendments that Katie noted in her presentation are already included in the proposed resolution. If you want to make additional changes- in the proposed resolution. If you want to make additional changes, for instance, the change that the mayor is talking about, we would recommend that you address that issue by motion, and, and then when the, the adoption of the budget is before you, you can represent the motion as previously amended. Does that work, Katie?
Yes, that does work.
Council Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. Can, can I get staff feedback on the, on whether there are concerns that the 150,000 would draw down ARPA too much, given the remaining projects that are outstanding?
I'll ask Crystal first to tell us how much is, more, more refined number than approximate, but the 500,000 the mayor uses is pretty ballpark.
You're real close, Mayor. It's 512,653. And those are undesignedated.
That's, those are the undesignedated funds. So there's still other funds not spent that are designated to projects. There was a conversation a couple of council meetings ago about the elevator repairs for the community center. We're still working through the process to refine what those bids would look like. At that point, we felt like we might be around 60,000 short of existing funds. I, I would say that the, the software purchase makes sense with respect to the kinds of projects that the council has primarily funded over the course of ARPA. We've, we've tried to focus on one-time purchases or other purchases that have limited carrying costs. I, I'm not particularly concerned if the council wants to, to move that software purchase, which also I think includes the first year's licensing, so the 151,000 that the Budget Committee talked about. If you direct us to use unallocated ARPA funds, I think we'll still have remaining unallocated ARPA funds to deal with potential project overages and the, and the elevator, as we've identified. And there may be some left beyond that as well.
Any other discussion about that?
Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to move to pay for the municipal court software out of undesignedated ARPA funds in the amount of 151,000 dollars.
Everybody wants to second it. I have a motion from Council Peralta, and I heard Council Gary second it first. Claudia, if you want to.
Council Cunningham.
Aye.
Council Tekolsky.
Aye.
Council Chenoweth.
Aye.
Council Payne.
Aye.
Council Gary.
Aye.
And Council President Peralta.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Any other motions from, or discussion from the council?
I actually had two items, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, Council Tekolsky.
Yeah, so Director Muir, or maybe intern Director Berg, for the senior center, did we ever come up with further quotes and opportunities for the senior center?
I do not have any information about that. I do believe that Susan is available. Most of the things that, that in that period when she was leaving, she was getting ready to leave, everything was copied to me, and I did not see any information about that. But I can, I'll reach out to a couple of people and see if there was anything further. Oh, there's Susan. Look at that. Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I heard the question correctly. Council Tekolsky, was it about the proposed updates and upgrades that we talked about during the original budget conversation?
Exactly.
Yeah. So there was not enough votes on that to move that forward at the budget meeting, so we, it really is wrapped into the bond conversation at this point, and the updates and the enhancements. So it'd be a part of that project.
If it passes, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And if not, there'll be other options to bring back.
Right. And so I, I guess what I'm asking in this case, Director Muir, is, is there a dollar amount that you have at your disposal right now that you would need to make those improvements that is an actual quoted amount?
Um, we, we did put it together, and I, I'd have to go back and look up the paperwork that we had during that initial budget meeting. But those, those estimates came through talking with some providers for like the flooring and stuff, and looking up some cost estimates for furniture. That was one of the improvements we had. And we already had some of the data on the lighting updates. So that number, I feel solid with that number, to be able to make some of the improvements that we discussed at the original Budget Committee meeting. And it'll take me just a minute to go back and pull that, that worksheet up.
Okay. I can go on to my second question, if I may, Mayor, while you look that up, Director Muir.
Okay.
And Director Richards, this one is for you specifically. Your, your department took some, I will call, financial hits during the budgeting process as well. Are there any opportunities that you'd like to discuss that may be potential to increase for your area that would be significant and actually have an impact?
No. And the reason I say that is I'm comfortable with what, what has been discussed and proposed. The only place that I have some concerns that I'll be watching is the code compliance program. It's reduced by 50%, and whether we can handle the amount of calls coming in relative to that. We just went through a year where we had, you know, just one FTE in that program, and, and by having other people support the program during the couple of months where it was increased in calls, we were able to get through it. So I want to see how that plays out.
Okay. So you're comfortable with your budget as it was proposed?
But thank you for asking.
Okay. Thank you. That's all that I had until Director Muir has more information.
Did you want to wait to hear from?
I would prefer that we could go on to someone else if we wish, right now.
We kind of have to go on to voting.
Although she's back, yeah.
I'm back, and I think the, I pulled up some information. I think it is what I had suggested before, but we had the lobby painting for $10,000. We had about $10,000, I think, or maybe it was 20, for furniture improvements. The lobby entry library wellness redesign for the safety at the entrance was about $105,000. And then we had about $6,000 for lighting throughout the building to make it brighter. So I can total those up real quick. And these may be, oh, 100, well, good.
About 151.
159,282 was the estimate that I brought to you in total at the Budget Committee meeting.
Did that include flooring?
Yeah.
I, I guess I would look for guidance from the other councilors. I think it's important to have a senior center that's well-lit, functioning, and an opportunity for them. But I'd like to hear from others.
Those improvements are included in the bond. So if the bond is moving forward, I wonder if we could kind of stand down on the budgeting process of it?
I just don't know that the bond will move forward.
Yeah, I don't know either. I, I would indicate, it's relevant to the bond, that we can perhaps save some money on not doing the polling, but that's.
And I, I would just let you know that if the bond is unsuccessful, you will have a lot more conversations about what we need to do with the community center, the aquatic center, and the other improvements that were included in there if it doesn't pass. So we would definitely be back with a Plan B or some sort of alternative conversation. But we, we, we would need to do something at all of them.
Okay. Now, there are no tripping hazards. They take care of those immediately. I'll stand down then, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? No?
Okay, Mayor.
Yes.
I am not sure the exact form of the question, of the comment, but I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-28, and adopt the budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and make appropriations, imposing property taxes, and categorizing the property taxes.
Can I ask a question before he finishes that motion?
With the amendment.
With the amendment. Do we need the dollar amount of the budget, Katie? Which is going to be different than what I have.
It is going to be slightly different. And if there is a way to either take a recess or go on to another, oh, you already have a motion. If that is the only amendment, the 151.
Hasn't been seconded, you can withdraw.
Okay, I will withdraw the motion for further consideration.
So you can work on that, Katie. We're going to move on.
I thought Council Tekolsky seconded. No?
Nope, I didn't finish my sentence.
Sure.
Nope, it was legal.
Okay, so we're going to come back to that. We're going to go back, go to C, 7C. Consider resolution number 2025-31, a resolution authorizing staff to initiate a formal recruitment process for an interim city manager. I'd like to call on Attorney David Leitenberg to present.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the city manager has indicated that he will be resigning from his position, and that puts us in a position where we will need an interim city manager in order to maintain functions of the city in the interim. That is something required by the Oregon Public Meetings law, that we adopt certain standards in a public meeting. Those standards are reflected in the resolution in front of you, specifically that we put the recruitment out there to the public, that they have the opportunity to comment on it, and that these hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives be understood. The, we have kept some of those things somewhat broad, somewhat to the discretion of staff in carrying them out. And if you have any further questions, myself or Director Hedges can field them. But this is about getting that process started.
Any councilors have any questions? Okay, so hearing none, I ask for a motion to consider resolution number 2025-31, a resolution authorizing staff to initiate a formal recruitment process for an interim city manager. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Council Payne, and a second from Council Cunningham. Claudia?
Council Cunningham.
Aye.
Council Tekolsky.
Aye.
Council Chenoweth.
Aye.
Council Payne.
Aye.
Council Gary.
Aye.
Council President Peralta.
Yes.
Resolution number 2025-31 passes unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Crystal or Katie, did you have a number? Somebody?
So, so the amendment that you made by motion earlier tonight will change some of the details in the resolution. And I think the motion, adopting the resolution as amended, gives us the ability to change those discrete numbers. It doesn't actually change the total adoption amount, because we're just moving money from one fund to another.
Okay.
So the, the 121, 121,554,284 is the right number. The making appropriations, I think that is also the right number. But I'll let Katie weigh in here in a second, and then the tax information is also correct.
The only thing that I'm not sure about is the, that I believe we have a decrease in appropriations of the.
ARPA funds.
Of the general fund, of the.
ARPA?
No, the ARPA goes into the fund balance. It's the muni-court section, which is its own appropriation. And so that needs to decrease by the, by the 151, and the transfers need to increase. And those are on, those are in separate lines on the resolution. They are separate appropriations on the resolution itself.
Right, but, but the motion that was previously passed to amend the budget, to spend that 151,000 is the direction we need to change those numbers in the resolution that's being considered, right?
That's correct.
So a motion as amended, restating the total adoption and the making appropriations and the tax amount, and the GO bond number, that, that's all you need to adopt the budget, is those numbers.
Okay, so we're going to make a resolution to adopt 2025-28, adopting the 2025-26 budget as amended, in the total amount of 121,454,284, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and to make appropriate appropriations in the amount of 84,096,394, to impose and categorize the City of McMinnville's permanent property tax rate of $4.52 per thousand assessed value for general operations, and 3022110 for debt service.
So.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor has some of.
So I have a motion from Council Tekolsky.
Second.
A second from Council Gary. Claudia?
Council Cunningham.
Aye.
Council Tekolsky.
Aye.
Council Chenoweth.
Aye.
Council Payne.
Nay.
Council Gary.
Aye.
Council President Peralta.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-28 passes by a vote of five ayes and one nay.
Okay. The city council will be going into a conference room for close to the public three executive sessions. For the first pursuant to ORS 192.6602F, to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. The second pursuant to ORS 192.6602H, to consult with council regarding the legal rights and duties of a public body with a regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. And third pursuant to ORS 192.6602A, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Does any council need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding the executive session for the record? Hello, people. Don't leave me next time. Yes.
Yes, I need to declare a potential conflict regarding.
Regarding, da, 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 looks like number one. Regarding a public contract.
Regarding the public contract.
Okay. I will now.